You ready, boss?
Yes. How are you?
Hi, how you doing?
I think the rest of you should be coming. Yeah, I'm ready. This is like quite the important day to take these students for Saturday. For graduation, I'm like, look at that pointy arrangement, you know?
I was saying, I had to keep it loud, yeah.
Keep them off, one of the coolers. Keep them off. It's gorgeous, I mean, that's the thing, it's quite nice to have like a...
And I think they just didn't all right there.
Yeah. It's never okay, how's everything going?
All right, not too bad, not too bad, can't complain.
Oh my God, I thought you looked like you just got out of the middle of the area or something.
Well, I was looking, just happened to be looking at my desk and was like, wait a minute, oh yeah! I said, here, you can have it.
I think that's fantastic. At least it wasn't a compromising one, you know? Then you can show, you know?
Do you have some moments after this whole thing or the next couple of days if you're interested in getting your advice about coming to Washington?
I would be thrilled to.
No.
Hey! I'd be excited, I love it!
Maybe let this speak like Amy and those guys come on and speak, and we'll speak. Yeah, I don't know why they did that, to be honest.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Like to bring this mess, oh, this meeting together, sorry about that. Meeting, special board meeting of the WMU trustees together for a very significant event today, and appreciate everyone's attendance. So, Dr. Schuman, do we have a quorum?
Chair Edgerton, we do.
Okay, and is the livestream operating and all set?
I'm getting the thumbs up, yes.
Okay, at that time, I'd like to entertain a motion from the board to adopt today's agenda.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Okay, thank you, thank you all for attending. This is a great meeting, great turnout, and it's very, very impressive. And it's really a great honor to be here today to appoint our next 10th president to WMU. This moment reflects not only on the importance to the institution, but also the deep responsibility that this board carries. Selecting a president is probably one of the most important decisions a board can make, and we take that responsibility seriously. We approach this process with care, intention, and a commitment to our mission. It's very important that we now recognize our Presidential Search Committee, and I'm hoping a lot of them are in the audience today. This group, made up of 25 individuals across the campus as well as the community, put in time, effort, and a lot of hours in getting us to this point today. And I'm very appreciative, the board is very appreciative. They were shepherded by my two co-chairs, Trustee Liggins and Trustee Kara Wood, who is virtual. And so, I want to ask all those that served on that committee to stand if you're in the audience, and please be recognized by this group. Thank you all for your commitment to this search process and to WMU and getting us to where we are today. We launched an expansive and highly competitive national search for this position. It attracted a lot of strong candidates, a diverse pool of leaders with experience and passion for higher education. But it's from that remarkable pool that one candidate rose to as the best match for this moment in our history. We're at a pivotal point of strength, a position earned through years of hard work, dedication, and focus from this community. Yet, we're also operating in a time when higher education is facing its greatest disruption in generations. Disruption, though, can mean opportunity, and we need a leader for that time. I'd now like to turn it over to our ninth president, Dr. President Montgomery, to have a brief remark.
Good afternoon, everybody. Ah, it's a great day, the sun's about to come out, right? No? Sun's not gonna come out, okay, never mind, the weatherman has spoken again. Anyway, thank you, everybody, for being here, and I want to echo Chair Edgerton's sentiments and extend my personal gratitude to the Board of Trustees, as well as the Presidential Search Advisory Committee for leading an extensive search for Western Michigan University's 10th president. Their dedication to the future of this great institution is appreciated, and because of their work, Western is well positioned for continued success. Today is a significant moment in Western's history. It's one that we've approached with confidence, excitement, and optimism. As we celebrate this tradition, this transition, it's worth taking a moment to recognize the progress that we've made over the last couple of years. Few achievements speak more to our mission than the progress we've made in advancing student success and deepening our commitment to access and the furtherance of "so that all may learn." Our impact extends beyond the classroom to our research and our laboratories, where we're proud to have increased both our funding and the reach of our creative activities and scholarship. We've also strengthened our ties to the community of Kalamazoo and around the state by building partnerships with businesses, nonprofits, women, and minority-owned biz startups and companies by expanding experience-driven learning educational experiences for our students. We've led the way in sustainability, increasing green space, reducing stormwater runoff, and moving to lead-certified buildings, embedding innovative environmental practices into our operations, academic programming, and student life. WMU has prioritized well-being on the campus and the Okanagan Charter. In fact, we've become champions for developing a healthy, inclusive environment. This progress has been made possible by a shared commitment to the vision from our faculty, staff, students, trustees, alumni, and partners who are gathered here and who are around the country. Serving as president for the last eight years has been an incredible honor. Over these years, I've had the opportunity to witness and be part of this extraordinary journey for this campus. On that topic of extraordinary journey, of course, while I've mentioned some of our accomplishments, I'd be remiss if I didn't drop the mic on, how about that hockey team, huh? It's immense pride we feel in what we've built together. Our achievements have laid a strong foundation, and now the time has come to pass the torch to a new leader of exceptional ability. Russ Cavalluna brings a distinguished career in public service and higher education, along with a long personal connection to our campus. His success across three different sectors demonstrates that he is ready to lead us into the future and to champion our cause across a broad array of stakeholders. I've had the honor of meeting Russ first in 2017 during my early days at WMU. At that time, he was serving as the Executive Director of Flight Operations in the College of Aviation, playing a key role on the team that helped advance us to the leading aviation program in the country and rapidly expanding enrollment. In 2018, I was proud to attend his inauguration as the new president of Henry Ford College, where he had a clear vision for the importance of higher education in the lives of all of our citizens. Most recently, in 2023, we had the opportunity to work together as we collaborated on the Governor Whitner's Growing Michigan Together Council, which he co-chaired the Higher Education Task Force, where we worked on solutions for Michigan workforce challenges, fuel economic growth, and expand opportunity for all Michiganders to ascend to higher heights. At its core, he is a tireless champion for higher education, and he understands it is one of the keys to improving the economic and climate in our state and around the country, and critical to mobility for its residents. It's clear that he has earned the respect of leaders across the state through his activities and his career. He's a proud alum and devoted to Western and understands our mission deeply and cares about the well-being of our students, faculty, and staff, and is committed to building an inclusive environment here at Western. I'm confident that the future of our institution is in capable hands of a leader who will advocate far and wide for the remarkable experience-driven education that we provide here. Former basketball player Bill Bradley said, "Leadership is unlocking people's potential to become better." In Russ, I'm sure we have a master locksmith. I'm fully committed to a smooth and effective transition so that Western can enter into its next chapter with purpose and momentum. In fact, we've already begun to discuss the transition and to work on some of the challenges and opportunities that may lay ahead. I look forward to working with him in the days ahead to make sure that Broncos soar into the future under our 10th president. It's been my privilege to serve, and I look forward to passing the baton, or in the case of Broncos, jumping off the horse and letting him jump on the horse, so that our university can reach new heights. Go Broncos! Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Montgomery, for your leadership in advancing student success and educational excellence. We are a board that's unified in celebrating your legacy and deeply value your dedication to a collaborative transition. Next, I'm going to invite Trustee Liggins, who co-chaired the search committee, to present the action item.
I always say it's a danger to put a practicing attorney and an associate pastor at a podium with a mic. I will try to be brief. The Western Michigan University Board of Trustees embarked on a collaborative seventh-month journey to appoint the 10th president and to guide WMU in a next era of excellence here. And we led that, I myself, along with Trustee Kara Wood, led a 25-person Presidential Search Advisory Committee composed of students, faculty, staff, and external stakeholders. And that was formed to assist all of us in this crucial effort. We thought it was important that each of you all had some type of voice in this process. PSAC, that's what I call the Presidential Search Committee, vetted an impressively diverse candidate pool, which was narrowed to four finalists, who were then invited to confidentially meet with a broader group of WMU representatives. This additional perspective helped us to triangulate our determination, and it demonstrates value in seeking perspective from multiple stakeholders like you. Russell A. Cavalluna brings to the role of president an unmatched blend of public service, higher education leadership, and a results-oriented approach to education that will build on WMU's positive momentum. He is currently president of Henry Ford College and a WMU alumnus with a multifaceted professional background and demonstrated years of leading complexity and stewarding organizational success. President Cavalluna has chartered a career defined by advocacy, accountability, and transformative leadership. As president of HFC since 2018, Russell Cavalluna has led the institution to achieve enrollment growth, along with increased retention and graduation rates, and prior roles to his presidency included as an Executive Director of Flight Operations here at our own WMU's College of Aviation, serving as a federal prosecutor, which, of course, causes him to have a strong advocacy mindset, a Michigan Supreme Court law clerk, and as a commercial airline pilot. He's a strong advocate for students and higher education, and he has long been recognized as a connector across sectors drawing on deep experience in law, aviation, education, to engage with partners at the local, state, and federal levels. His collaborative approach and belief in the value of higher education are central to his leadership style. So, it is with great honor and with a sense of the gravitas of the moment that I, as a trustee of this organization, would submit a motion that Western Michigan University appoint President-elect, or appoint Russell Cavalluna as President-elect effective April 23rd, 2025, and as the 10th president of Western Michigan University effective July 1st, 2025, and that the Board of Trustees empower our chair to sign an employment agreement on behalf of the Board of Trustees forthwith.
Thank you, Trustee Liggins, and I know myself, as well as some of the fellow trustees, have some comments to make before we actually vote on the presidency appointment. So, I guess it's kind of unusual, but we're all gonna jump up and use the podium, okay? Is it on? Okay, there we go, just wasn't close enough, I guess. Short people, you know? Anyways, I'd really like to just say ditto to Trustee Liggins' comments, because that's, I think, how we all feel here today. So, I'm very happy to be here and really am thankful for the work of the PSAC Committee. But importantly, I think, you know, President Russ Cavalluna, Russ, is the perfect leader for Western at this critical time. He's accomplished higher ed leader with a proven track record at an institution of higher learning. His leadership has improved student outcomes, he's expanded the market share over there, he's strengthened the financial position at Henry Ford College. And he not only brings experience, but an uncommon clarity for the work ahead of us. Russ is authentic, team-oriented, and it's those qualities that we're going to need now as we work in terms of the disruption going on in higher ed. He's principled, agile, collaborative, I think all the PSAC Committee members probably would agree, and we're confident he is the right person right now for Western. We're fortunate to have found someone whose values and strength are also aligned with our aspirations. He is going to unlock WMU's full potential to empower students and improve life for people of our state. Transformative presidencies emerge from attracting the right leader at the right time, and I believe we have a President-elect whose experiences transcend that convention and whose vision and collaboration with this community throughout the campus as well as the community as a whole will bring that continued transformation that's needed. We're in a position where we will start to probably redefine what it means to be in higher education in today's world. We're going to extend our reach beyond this campus, adding Bronco advocates among our students, faculty, staff, partners, who are already building sustainable relationships throughout our community. And we will build undeniable positive momentum under his leadership. So with that, I'd like to welcome President-elect Russ Cavalluna and his family today. We're just gonna go down the line, so everybody be prepared, John, you're on deck.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for being here today, this is a very exciting day for all of us, I believe. I'm gonna try not to get too emotional, Russ. The Western Michigan community, the city of Kalamazoo, this is a proud, proud moment for all of us. You have a man here who cares deeply about this institution, about the students, about the city, about everyone here in our sphere. I've seen it, I've personally seen him in Detroit work with business leaders, I've seen him work in Lansing with legislators to get the resources he needs to make sure his students are successful. And it's no coincidence at all that we're coming off of, let's not forget, a national dance championship. Little girls. And a national hockey championship. I mean, I'm really, really proud to be a Bronco, as I've always been, but right now it's just, it's elevated. I feel like I'm on such a high right now, and especially with Russ coming in, because this man is a team player. You will see this, you mark my words, five years from now, you all will be going, yep, that's right, we all made a really good decision with Russ, because he will work with every one of you to make sure this university is successful, that works on the foundation that has been built by the leaders here, and especially President Montgomery. As you said earlier, Russ, we have a strong foundation and no limits. So, checklist complete, you are clear for takeoff.
The only person more dangerous at a mic besides a pastor and a lawyer might be a recovering politician. But I'll be brief. When you think about Russ Cavalluna, I hope you think about connection, because throughout this process, that was the piece that made me realize that he was exactly the right leader for what we need right now. And I want to talk about connection in two points. The connection on campus and the connection to our country. On campus, we have been striving to build a student-centered experience that prioritizes student success. But we also know, and something that President-elect Cavalluna knows, is that it's the connection to the full-time faculty, the part-time instructors and organizers, it is the teaching assistants, it is the entire staff, from our groundskeepers, to the folks in our food service, to the police officers, to the folks keeping the power on, that bring together the connection in the community about making sure that those students can thrive. Russ gets it. I was thrilled to watch him in conversation, prioritizing these relationships and figuring out, what can we do next? What is the next hill we can climb, and how can we make sure that everybody is going to be in a situation where they can thrive? That's Russ, it's the connection that he brings. But President Cavalluna also realizes that we do not sit on a hill in isolation. I have watched as he has built connection in relationships from Lansing to DC, on both sides of the aisle, from folks that are wearing their partisan hats to nonpartisan community leaders. He gets that in the moment we're in, relationships matter, and you do that by talking, by listening, by breaking bread. The type of leadership we need right now is one of connection, in so many more ways than just the moment we're in. But I saw him come to the moment, and I am thrilled to be able to cast a vote for him momentarily. So I hope everybody in this room gets to experience the type of connection that I did, and I'm excited to continue, as with our President-elect Russ Cavalluna.
Thank you, Trustee Holdley, I'd now like to welcome... Do you want to go to the TV? Okay. Trustee Kara Wood.
Good afternoon, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I just want to echo some of the comments of my fellow trustees and co-chair, James Liggins, and start by thanking the PSAC. We had a great, very engaged internal and external process that produced an expansive and highly competitive process that produced a great pool of excellent candidates. And this has led us to the best match for Western at this time in our history. Certainly, higher ed has its challenges in our near future, and I'm confident that we will face challenges but create opportunities that will lead Western great places, and I'm excited about our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Wood, Trustee Williams.
Good afternoon, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, I apologize for not being able to join you all in person, I had a planned meeting with the Michigan Department of Education today, and I could not be there in person for this momentous occasion. I would like to take a moment to recognize Russ for the outstanding work that he's doing across southeast Michigan. His visibility and dedication to building strong, meaningful partnerships in the region are truly commendable. It's evident that he is deeply committed to creating lasting connections that benefit our communities. A few weeks ago, some of my students were visiting Henry Ford College, I reached out to Russ to let him know that they were there, and he went above and beyond by locating my group, connecting with my team, and offering his support. My team was incredibly grateful for his quick response and personal engagement. Looking ahead, we're so excited about the potential to work even more closely with our local schools. Creating strong pipelines from K-12 to college is key to supporting our students and helping them succeed, not just in the classroom, but in life. Thank you, President Russ, for your leadership and for your continuation to move this important work forward. Can't wait to see your impact on the WMU school community. Congratulations.
Trustee Ling Zan.
There we go, okay. Good afternoon. I once was at an event when a president talked with a group of donors, and she said, "Remember, when you write a check, you're not giving to me, you're giving to the students." So for as good as it sounds, I actually disagree with that statement. Because in my mind, when a donor writes a check, sure, they know it ultimately goes to benefit our students. However, they are giving it to you, because they trust you to get it to serve the students' needs properly. So you are important. So, I know that the Ross comes from a very deep community root. So, I know, when we interviewed him, I asked him, I said, "Are you good at getting money?" You know, very straightforward. So, President Montgomery did a great job to really expand the amount of our foundation dollars, and I know that Russ can come in, take over the torch, and complete the rest of the campaign, not because he's... Not because he's good at getting money, which I know he is good at getting money, I heard the stories. But he is, people, donors will see that he is the right leader for the moment. And for that, they will write the checks for the campaign. And then, we talk about, the president's function goes way beyond just the campus. It goes to the community, which he is very excited to see and to be seeing again, I know. From, again, from what I heard, I think we all expect him to be everywhere. We need to be ready for that. And also, for the alum, they are more excited to see one of our own Broncos to be the president, to lead this institute. I think he will be a rock star among our alums, and we will see a very big, high increase in engagement with our alums. So, thank you. You got my support.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee. Now, Vice Chair, Alan Turfee.
Hello, national championship. Right? National champions and more than one... Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And we've got some future Broncos here, and Russ has two children, Sammy and Miles. So we're looking forward to great things from you all. And his mother, Ruth, is here, who's an alumnus, and his wife, Courtney, who's an alumnus. So, welcome back home. We are thrilled to welcome President Cavalluna as our 10th president at Western Michigan University. His appointment marks the beginning of a bold and transformative chapter for our institution. With a visionary outlook and dynamic leadership style, President Cavalluna is poised to inspire a sense of excitement and purpose within our WMU community, among our students, their families, and our dedicated faculty alike. His unwavering commitment to innovation and excellence offers a promising pathway to a brighter future, where our university's potential will be realized in extraordinary ways. President Cavalluna's return to WMU is a story that resonates deeply within the Broncos' spirit. Having grown up in the greater Kalamazoo area, this appointment is just not a professional milestone for him, but a heartfelt homecoming to his roots. As a proud WMU alum, he carries with him an intrinsic understanding of what makes our university and community so special. His deep connection to the values and traditions of Western Michigan University serves as a guiding light, uniting us all in a shared mission to growth and success. Under President Cavalluna's leadership, we anticipate a future filled with opportunities for innovation, collaboration, and excellence. His passion for our community and steadfast dedication to the success of WMU and its people exemplifies the enduring power of the Bronco spirit. Together, we are poised to journey and enter an exciting new era, one that will be defined by bold ideas, transformative growth, and an extraordinary achievement under his guidance and stewardship. To President Cavalluna and his family, welcome back home.
Okay. Anyone else, James? Good. Okay. At this time, we have a motion on the table for the appointment of Russ Cavalluna to the presidency. I need a second.
I'll second.
And I need a roll call.
Chair Edgerton.
Yes.
Vice Chair Turfee.
Yes.
Trustee Burris.
Yes.
Trustee Chen Zhang.
Yes.
Trustee Holdley.
Yes.
Trustee Liggins.
Absolutely, yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Chair Edgerton, motion passes.
Next, I'm gonna welcome our shared governance partners up to the podium for a brief comment, and then we will hear from the President-elect.
Good afternoon, Chair Edgerton, members of the Board of Trustees, colleagues, guests, and the Cavalluna family. It's a great honor as both president of the Faculty Senate and a member of the Presidential Search Advisory Committee to formally welcome Russ Cavalluna as the 10th president of Western Michigan University. I have to say that after months of carefully reviewing applications, conducting interviews, and navigating search committee meetings that I might say tested our turbulence tolerance, we knew we needed a leader with vision, drive, and most importantly, a sense of humor. Because let's face it, higher education now isn't exactly flying through clear skies and is not for the faint of heart. We're in a time of rapid change, of shifting demographics, rising skepticism, and evolving student needs. This is an unprecedented moment, a moment that calls not for autopilot, but for a pilot ready to lead with courage, clarity, and connection. And President-elect Cavalluna brings all of that and more. What stood out to so many of us during this process was President-elect Cavalluna's deep and evident passion for WMU. This isn't just another position for him, it's a purpose. He speaks about Western with the heart of someone who knows its history, understands its potential, and genuinely wants to see it thrive, not just in the rankings, but in its relationship, its mission, and its future. President-elect Cavalluna has a dynamic leadership style, equal parts energy and empathy. He's a listener who doesn't just nod along, but actually hears you. He leads with both head and heart, and somehow manages to do so without needing a whiteboard or 47-slide PowerPoint deck, which in higher ed is practically a superpower. And in this moment, a moment when our institutions need friends, President-elect Cavalluna is exactly the kind of leader who will build bridges. He understands that strong universities are built not just on budgets and buildings, but on allegiances, on the goodwill, trust, and collaboration of faculty, staff, students, alumni, and community partners. President-elect Cavalluna knows how to bring people to the table. And if there isn't a table, I guess we could probably count on him to build one, or at least he'll pull up a chair and get the conversation going. As we look to the future, I know that my colleagues on the Faculty Senate and across campus are eager to work with President-elect Cavalluna. We're ready to lean into the tough questions, roll up our sleeves, and join him in shaping the next great chapter of Western Michigan University. We're prepared to face the turbulence, push through the headwinds, and help him guide this university into its next great ascent. So, on behalf of the faculty and as someone who's had a front row seat throughout this search, let me say, we're excited. We see in President-elect Cavalluna not just a president, but a partner, someone who values shared governance, who listens with intention, and who leads with clarity and care. We're ready to walk alongside you as we navigate the challenges ahead and pursue the opportunities that make WMU a place worth believing in. Just one warning, though, the Faculty Senate does always have an agenda, and sometimes some snacks. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Renago, from the Western Student Association, former president, soon-to-be graduate, Alex Kastresak.
Good afternoon, my fellow members of the WMU community. I'm Alex Kastresak, former student body president and member of the Presidential Search Committee. It is an honor to stand before you all today as we mark a new beginning for Western Michigan University. Serving on the Presidential Search Committee has been one of the most meaningful responsibilities of my time at WMU, alongside a diverse and passionate group of students, faculty, staff, administrators, and community members. We all had the opportunity to help shape the future of our university. Throughout this search, one priority remained clear to me. We need a president who loves higher education and who loves Western Michigan University and what it stands for. President-elect Calvahuna was not just a candidate that expressed interest in WMU, he understood what it means to be a Bronco. As an alum himself, he understands the struggle of walking up those valley hills and has worn our brown and gold with pride for many years. This love and understanding of our community brings me great confidence that the President-elect will not just listen to student voices, but actively invite them in. He will value our perspectives, champion our ideas, and see student advocacy as essential, not optional, to decision-making. This will be a difficult time for higher education, and we need a president who has intrinsic motivation to serve our university. From the beginning, it was obvious that President-elect Calvahuna did not just want to be a president of a university. He wanted to specifically be the president of Western Michigan University. There could be no better choice for our 10th president than someone who walks in our shoes, an alum who understands firsthand the heart and spirit of this university. I believe that this will be a transformative moment for our university. Under his leadership, I know that student voices will continue to be at the table, helping to shape policy, culture, and the Bronco experience for generations to come. Welcome back home to WMU, President Calvahuna. I'm incredibly excited to see what you accomplish. Thank you.
Who's also ready to graduate Saturday. On Saturday, 9:00 AM, tune in. Well, the last most dangerous thing you can do is put me on the mic again. But I'll be brief, don't worry. There's not much more that I can say that hasn't already been said. Good afternoon to all.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. When I was approached to give a couple words, I was both honored and didn't really know where to begin. It's been a long process, along with my PSAC members, so thank you all again for allowing me to be in that space, and thank you for your service along with me to bring in our next president. As a representative, on behalf of the graduate students, I was able to take their opinions and voices as I listened diligently to what they could have in a perfect world when it came to the next president. While I know that this job, including being part of the PSAC, isn't easy, I think the step that was given, including students to be a part of it, was already made a world of a difference. Now with the decision being made, I am proud to say I was part of the process, but also am part of the bridge that will be built between grad students and the incoming president. As we continue to stride during very difficult and unknown times, I am confident that our next president, President Cavalluna, will be the guidance that WMU needs to continue making sure that this is a space so that all may learn. From the beginning, I knew President Cavalluna was who the board was looking for by the way he spoke about students. Also, if you don't know, I have a gift. I can read when people are being genuine or just reading an answer that I want to hear. And let's just say, I knew that all of the answers and conversations we had were very genuine. From a proud Latina and proud child of immigrants to another, I want to thank you for caring about those who look like me, and I know you will continue to help every student who steps foot on this campus reach success, whatever that may look like. Although I am very sad that I won't be here as a student during the time when you pick up your term, I am sure I will see the great things on the news, whatever that may be, wherever I am at. If I do find out that you are doing the opposite of what you told me and promised me during that time and my peers, I will make sure to make my way back to Kalamazoo. So thank you. Thank you all, and go Broncos.
Thank you all again for your service and dedication to WMU, and especially to the Student Association reps who are graduating this year. Very proud Broncos. So at this time, I'd like to ask President-elect Cavalluna to come up and say a few remarks.
So we've seen two folks start with a good joke about the risk of letting them talk. And one was a practicing lawyer and a clergy, and one was a recovering politician. But I think I've got them beat. I am a recovering lawyer and a current college president. First, just let me say thank you to everyone who made comments today. My kids would never believe any of those things. And I've got evidence now that at least some folks believe those things. But you've all dedicated time to saying nice things about me on behalf of Western Michigan University. Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. President, trustees, my teammates, my fellow students, my... And I say fellow students because I still see myself as a Bronco student. I'll always see myself as a resident. As a resident of Ackley Hall on the top floor, one of those special rooms where you only had two people in the room. Anybody ever had one of those? They were there in the corner. Alumnus, friends of our beloved university, I just want to say thank you. This is a really, really important day for me. And it made me think about something that I heard recently that somewhat summed up what I think most of us know about Western Michigan University. You all probably don't remember this because you were at the game in St. Louis, but those of us who were watching it on TV, at the end of the last period when the horn sounded, the announcer, and I don't know really how he knew this, but the announcer exclaimed, and you know, this is the end of the game where people say things that they want to be remembered. Does anybody remember what that announcer said? I wrote it down. It was so remarkable. And I'm not surprised the vice president of athletics remembered it. But I'm surprised that you were listening to it. The announcer exclaimed, and he yelled it, because the arena had just been overjoyed with this idea that this upstart team from Kalamazoo had just won their first national championship in the program ever, but in the last 60 years for the institution. And the announcer said, and I quote, "There are no bad days, ever, in Kalamazoo." And I mean, it just struck me. And I started thinking about it. And here's what I think he meant, and here's what I think we know. It's not literal. No one thinks that there are no bad days anywhere. I think what the announcer knew that we knew is, and that what I know from being from this place, from being from WMU, that the arc of our time here, from positives and negatives, from learning and struggling, and from achieving and then having sadness, that's the arc that there's never a bad day in Kalamazoo or WMU. That's what's special about this place. I know that because I've lived it. I know that because my family has lived it. So I think that encapsulates why I'm here. I know why this place is special. And it's worth looking over one shoulder when you get to something like this. Where have you come from? So I want to give you a little insight into where I've come from. I want to take stock of why. This is really a pinch-me moment. My dad introduced me to this place, driving me to Lawson when I was six years old, and he was an immigrant. I'm not sure that either of us knew the rules of hockey. But we kept going to Lawson, and it was exciting. And he told me, basically, "This is a place I want you to go to college, and it will expand your horizons, just like so many other people," and like it did for him. And that's true for me. And then for the next several years, I got to know Kalamazoo. My dad would take me to his brother's shoe store, Oak and Brothers. Anybody ever remember Oak and Brothers? My dad, it was a big deal. You got to buy new shoes once a year at Oak and Bros', where my dad... My dad was Ed, and they were immigrants, so he had a brother, Ed. One was Eduardo, and one was Edison. And Eduardo was my dad, and we'd go see Uncle Edison, and we'd get a new pair of shoes. I played Gus Mac or basketball on the streets of this town. I know this town because I lived here. I grew up here. I was born in Bronson Hospital, where my mom worked. And so this is where I went to college. And... And so this is where I went to college. And this is where I learned to fly airplanes. I had the privilege to teach others how to fly airplanes, and I started an idea that I might be able to be a leader, because I could see leaders around me, and I wanted to be like great leaders, and I wanted to learn from bad leaders, and I wanted to get on a track of leadership. And so that's where almost every single part of my life that is positive or redeemable originates in Kalamazoo or Western Michigan University. And so this is the reason why the things you're saying to me about coming home mean so much to me. I also think it's worth looking back over the shoulder of this institution. 122 years ago, we started. Generations of people have come through this institution and have found better lives. I know it, I've felt it. I know it, I can see my parents having done it. My cousin is sitting here, and I know that happened to her, and her daughter, who got married in the campus, was it just six months ago? I know it because I lived next door to Larry Almer, who I can see there, who was one of our All-American football players and was a physician in our community for a long time. I know that this institution has been the gateway for a progress mission for all of humanity. That's the beautiful, wonderful thing about Western Michigan University, and this is the reason why I asked to be your president, because I have seen the motto of "so that all may learn." I know it, and I'm so passionate about it. And I know we're in a time when higher education deserves someone to advocate for them, and that's what I enjoy doing, is taking a cause for people who are frankly smarter and better than me, and advocating for their cause. One person that's been doing that really well is my friend Ed Montgomery.[1132.75][1132.75][applause] Trustees, you may not know this, but trustee Montgomery and I met in 2017. He stole a little bit of the thunder of my story and telling, but I met with him again today, and he handed me a photograph, because this is just the kind of leader he was and is. He cared about me. In 2017, when he started here, I asked him to be my mentor. I said, "I think I might want to be able to become a leader in higher education." And I was lucky enough to be promoted to be the president of Henry Ford College, which is more than two hours away. And I asked President Montgomery to be there, and he drove, and he showed up. And I asked a lot of people from southwest Michigan. Some showed up, but one major player showed up, and he kept a picture of it.[1182.08][1182.08][laughter] And he gave that picture to me today. And I look a little less wise, a little less gray, but this is the person that I'm proud to follow. Because if you didn't know it, he just recently told this team, "We have to be a top-three public university in the state of Michigan, and we have to do it by 2032."[1208.83][1208.83][applause] But like the hockey team, he's going to be way ahead of the new president, because my understanding is, that ranking, which is based on the idea that we are producing public leaders, that we've been named twice in the Top 25 by Time Magazine, 2032 will happen a ways away, but my understanding is President Montgomery, under your leadership, we will meet our mark in the coming fall. Congratulations to President Montgomery.[1245.58][1245.58][applause] We've also had extraordinary development in our attempts to show that we can answer today's problems for tomorrow's society. That's also known as public research. This leader has devoted a ton of time and a ton of resources, hired leaders in this institution, and just last year, $59 million of research allocation came to this institution. You see, these are the types of things that folks need to know about higher education, but particularly the best university in the state of Michigan. That's Western Michigan University. We are growing research, we are answering tomorrow's questions, and we are staying true to our identity, which is being a teacher-scholar institution. We are proud of the teaching and learning, and experiential learning, that pilots and teachers, like those in my family, understand. But we are also so proud to partner with industry and government and nonprofits to answer tomorrow's problems in science and health and technology. We also like winning on sports teams, and we're getting really good at that, President Montgomery. I told you the little story that was remarkable to me that you all saw in St. Louis, but that's not the only national championship team recently. As you know, the Bronco Dance Team, the Women's Figure Skating Team, and WIDR are all also national champions.[1336.13][1336.13][applause] Bronco Nation is strong. Bronco Nation is proud. In fact, we have a wonderful foundation. Our floor is solid, but we have no ceiling. We have the chance to take on today's challenges, and you're right, colleagues, you're right, President Nagle. Higher education does have its challenges today, but if you're from Western, if you've ever been in a cockpit, or a courtroom, or a boardroom, you know, challenges are opportunities. Challenges are opportunities to learn and grow. Heck, that's what we're here for, to use challenges to learn and step back and fail and then grow and improve. This is what we will do, and we will continue to do, at Western Michigan University. We will not shirk from anyone criticizing and questioning our value. We'll stand up, and I'll be your advocate in every single room that I can get in, and I will tell them of your work, and your worth, and our students' value, and the data is behind us. We solve real problems. We prepare students for meaningful careers and meaningful lives. We're an accessible institution, and we're not going to run from that. That means if you want to have a better life through public education, like I got a chance to have, your home is Western Michigan University, whether it's in Detroit, or Grand Rapids, or Traverse City, the same is available to you here. And we're not scared to say that diverse groups of people make better decisions.[1432.13][1432.13][applause] This is what the modern universities should be able to say. This is what we have always been able to say, and if I can bring anything unique to this table, it'll be as your advocate, to continue to tell our story, which is remarkable. And when we do that, we can be the future of higher education, which is this place, this place where K-12, and industry, and government, and nonprofit come together to be with us in wonderful buildings like this right here, where we are the node for the future, where we are the place where we talk about and are curious about different religions and races and ideas, because we can come together and make stronger communities, and make stronger environments, and make stronger industry. This is what the future of higher education will be, and it is what we're primed to achieve. The last thing I'll just say is what the president remarked on his journey in student success. It's so resonant to me. You know, I was an average student in high school. My mom, who's here, basically made me go to college.[1512.01][1512.01][laughter] But it's Western who opened up this idea. Someone mentioned unlocking potential. It's Western that told me and showed me, "I can be like that leader. I can get interested in people who are different than my background." This place where we come together and we change lives, this is the node where we can gravitate people to us and make not only Kalamazoo, not only Michigan, we can be the national leader for dealing with these difficult problems we're all facing. There are so many voices trying to make us dislike and distrust and frankly hate each other. At this campus, we can show that listening and working together with people of good intention is the answer that we can provide and scale across the country. And I'm not telling you that because I learned that overnight. I'm telling you that because it works in the cockpit, it works in the courtroom, it works in your kitchen table, it will work in government. And that's what Western Michigan University has always been, and that is the foundation that we will continue to build. And that's why I asked, and I'm so grateful to have your support, to be your president. The last thing I'll just say is, President Kasperzak, where are you? I promised I'd get through this speech without tearing up, but when you said he loves this institution, it hit me. I do love this institution. I can't promise you I'll make all the right choices. I can promise you I will work as hard as every single one of you. You will never have to wonder if I'm being honest with you, and I can promise you, no one will love this institution more than you do, except for me.[1624.13][1624.13][laughter] Thank you for letting me be here. I can't wait to get started.
This is a very proud and pivotal day for us, because we have brought one of our own to be our next leader. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to all those that served in this search committee. To President-elect Cavalluna, we offer our full support as we enter into this next chapter. And to President Montgomery, thank you for your historic leadership during your tenure. But I'd also like to invite you all out to a reception after this to meet the President-elect and his family. Thank you all again for attending. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay. Yes, sir. That's a testament. We'll hold them to it. How about that? Thank you all very much, we appreciate it. Enjoy the refreshments out front, and yeah, motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you.[1741.63][1741.63][laughter][1742.63][1742.63][applause]